All right, I'd like to open our Sparks Planning Commission meeting of October 3rd, 2013. Roll call.
What a call. Commissioner Spurber.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Volz.
Here.
Commissioner Nowicki.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Hewens.
Here.
Commissioner Camerota.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Doug Thornley.
Here.
City Attorney Mark McLeod.
Here.
All right, first item here is a public comment. Would anybody like to speak anything that's on the agenda or not on the agenda at this time? Hearing nothing, let me, let's bring this back. Approval of the agenda? No to approve. Second. All right, call for the vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Approved. Approval of the minutes of August 1st. Motion approved. Second. Number first and second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? It's approved. Announcement and committee reports?
We don't have any. I think we've covered all of these.
Thank you, that item. Informational items?
No.
All right, let's go to the public hearings. First one is PCN 13019, a family trust here. Staff, Jim, good evening.
Jim Rundell, Senior Planner, here to present the annexation request from the MNST Family This is a request to annex three parcels that total approximately two and a half, just over two and a half acres. The property is in, almost you could say, central Sparks, in what a lot of people refer to as the Shadow Mountain area, as was described in the staff report. The parcels are highlighted in pink, and to the west we have Sparks Boulevard. Over here, just off the map would be Vista, actually you can see Vista coming in, in right here to give you some proximity. This zooms in on the property a little bit. This annexation request is a contiguous annexation request, and the contiguity is reflected on this site plan here depicted, I guess I should say. Again, the properties that are being considered for annexation today are highlighted in pink. The green hatched area is the area that is unincorporated county, and then the area that does not have hatching has been annexed into the city of Sparks over the years. To give you a background, this area was developed, the house that exists on the property that I believe was included in your staff report, was constructed in 1965, from what I could tell. And those areas where residential was constructed were a bit north of where the city of Sparks had extended its services back in that time. In 1980s, as the city began to move north, and then in the 90s when it began to move north more vigorously, these areas had already been developed, and therefore, the city essentially went around it to annex new development that had yet to be constructed. Over time, the area was left as a county island, and it exists as a county island today. The city of Sparks has accepted the application. Sparks staff is recommending the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval, as we've made a case for all of the required findings. This application is contiguous, but I wanted to show the planning commission a map of the seven-year annexation plan, program, excuse me, not plan, program. The program here still shows the East Truckee River Canyon, as the annexation program is only updated every seven years. And the last time we did it, the city of Sparks still was considering moving out to the East Truckee River Canyon. The areas highlighted in blue are what have been approved through Regional Planning Commission for annexation. This area, again here in the center of Sparks, has been identified for annexation. What the annexation program does allow for is discontiguous annexation and forced annexation. Neither of those two items are what we're considering today. This is a contiguous voluntary annexation request, and staff is recommending approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, Jim, and just before we vote, but just north of that is Satellite Drive, correct? And that hill right there, is that in the city of Sparks? That hill above Satellite Drive? It doesn't show it on the map, but it's a little bit north.
Everything that is, well, everything that is north of this hatched area has been annexed into the city of Sparks, in the proximity to which you're referring to. If we go back to the annexation program, the, I'm going to call it orange, area on the map, all of that has been annexed into this city of Sparks. So, maybe we can zoom in. Look at that resolution.
That was great. Wow.
It's like CSI.
Yeah.
So, there's no way I can point my pen, and, oh, look at that. So, I think you're talking about the area just north of there, Commissioner.
Right, right.
And that area has been annexed.
Okay.
And, again, this area is within, or is contiguous to all of that.
Yeah.
For example, on this map, since the annexation program was completed, we have annexed up here, the Sonoma Highlands area, as we call it. As you can see, this tan-colored parcel, that's the Lazy Five Library area, that has not been annexed, and that's why it's a different color. But it is in our sphere of influence.
Thank you, Jim. Other questions? Okay, would the applicant like to say anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, let's open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this? Okay, doesn't look like it. Okay, take it back to the thing. Any other questions? Anybody would like to make a motion?
Commissioner Spurber.
Yes.
I have one last comment. I did receive, I only received one phone call asking questions about the application.
But...
Once we explained it, they were okay with it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the annexation requests associated with PCN 13019, to annex approximately 2.6 acres into the city of Sparks, Nevada, based on the findings A1 through A4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second. Okay, we have first and second. Any more comments? Okay, call for the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Approved? Thank you. All right, next item, item number nine, CA 213. Staff, Karen, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner. Karen Malby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is a proposed code amendment to Title 20. This will be, what the, it's two pieces being proposed. The first one is amending 20.07, which is minor deviation, and then the second is adding a new kind of deviation, which was being called a major deviation. Based on the Phase II zoning code analysis and workshops with the city council, staff was given direction to find ways to remove barriers to development and proceed ahead with, and prepare a major deviation code amendment, which is before you tonight. When we looked at the major deviation code amendment, when I was working on that, I also found components in the minor that that's why we're proposing those changes tonight. Staff met with the Enterprise Fund Advisor Committee and also a Technical Advisor Committee to review this draft code amendment. The code amendment incorporates the comments that were received from both of those workshops. The code amendment includes a new definition for quantitative requirements, which is defined as a regulation that is capable of being counted and measured. So, we're also proposing a change to 20.05, which is definitions. Under the Minor Deviation section of the zoning code, the proposed code amendment allows for administrative adjustments up to 10 percent. What we're proposing is up to 10 percent on any quantitative requirement. Currently, the minor deviation applies to the location and/or dimensions of building, parking areas, internal roadways, providing the ingress and egress to the site does not change or exceed the density. The minor deviation, as proposed in our code amendment, will not apply to signs or parking. Staff is proposing a fee of $120 to process a minor deviation. The proposed major deviation would allow for an adjustment greater than 10 percent, but less than 10, 50 percent, or up to 50 percent. The applicant will have to file an application with the staff with a fee of, staff's proposing a fee of $1,250 deposit. The major deviation require noticing of at least 10 days before the public hearing, and notify each property owner within 500 feet of the property. The planning commission would hold a public hearing within 65 days after a filing of a complete application with the staff. The planning commission would then have to make findings that the major deviation is consistent with the Sparks master plan, and also the four proposed findings as outlined in the draft code amendment. The PC would be, have the ability to approve that minor deviation, deny it, or also continue our table. There must be an application filed for each major deviation, and the applicant is requesting that they are requesting on their property. So, if there's multiple deviations, the staff would look at cumulative impacts of all of the major deviations that they're asking for. The major deviation is a discretionary process, as proposed, intended to facilitate development by providing an opportunity for applicants to create, to use creative design, especially in the older parts of town, where development standards may be outdated or unnecessarily restrictive. The difference between the application and a variance is that a variance requires a demonstration of a hardship. The major deviation findings are intended to ensure that the project is compatible with the existing or permitted uses in the vicinity, and along with being consistent with the master plan, and not imposing any public safety or health issues. The major deviation is proposed as a discretionary review process, which may result in less predictability, and be more judgment on the part of the staff and planning commission. It will be important to assess the cumulative impacts on the neighborhood, particularly if the applicant was requesting multiple major deviations. There could be instances when the staff will not have a recommendation, or different than what the applicant is requesting. Concerns include the fact that the applicant may focus on major deviations rather than spending time and resources on finding solutions that comply with the existing zoning code. The major deviation process will have to be monitored to make sure it does not undermine our zoning code. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Karen, what do you mean?
You say monitor. Is that an in-house kind of process?
Yeah, we would have to, as staff, you know, look at how many major deviations that we receive, and see what types of deviation, major deviations, that were being processed, and look, you know, at the impacts or what they're doing, where, maybe it's happening in one particular neighborhood more than another, or something like that.
And does that leave possible opening for criticism in that regard?
Definitely. I mean, if we find a trend or something like that, it may necessitate the staff look at making an amendment to this proposed code in the future, or something like that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Karen, I have one. Would you, on the major deviation, would you give me a scenario on how it'd be consistent with the master plan?
Well, if they came in for, you know, like if it's in the TOD area, and they wanted to come in with a project that has a higher density, and they can't meet the setbacks, but they want, so they come in with a major deviation because they can't meet maybe the FAR, the floor area ratio, or the setbacks, but it is consistent with the, say, it's in mixed residential, and it's consistent with that use because they're proposing a residential project. So, it would be consistent with the master plan in that respect, that we're proposing this to be a high-density residential project, and because of the shape of the lot or the size, they can't meet their setbacks, or the FAR, or something.
Okay, would it be brought to our attention that it would have to meet the qualifications for that?
Oh, definitely, we would make that. That would be something that we would discuss in the staff report.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Historically, what have we charged, and what have we charged for the normal 10 percent deviations that we have been working with in the past?
The minor deviation right now has no fee.
Okay, so this...
But we're, what we're proposing with this is that we will have a formal application. Right now, people just submit us a letter, and they have to submit letters from the neighbors, and then the staff processes it and writes a letter. And so, what we're trying to do is actually trying to formalize the minor deviation process more, and that's why we're requesting. Staff charges out at $120 an hour, so what I'm proposing is one hour of staff time.
As in the major deviation, factor that...
Since we're talking, $1,000 and change as a deposit, is that a fee, or is that something returnable upon?
Yes, it's a deposit. That's what we do now with our site plan reviews and special use permits. We, when they file an application, applicant files an application, they put in a deposit, and then staff tracks their time. We charge out at $120 an hour, and if they exceed that amount, then we bill them for the difference. If they do not reach the amount, then we refund them the difference.
So, that's calculated at the $120 an hour standard rate?
Yes.
I got you, thank you.
So, we're estimating roughly 10 hours of work. That would include...
Obviously, there'd be a lot more work with that than the minor deviation.
Yeah, because we have to prepare a staff report and analyze it, and do noticing, which is another cost, too.
What do you anticipate the reception will be for this change?
It's hard to say at this point.
How many, how many 10 percent deviation would you have done in, say, the last year?
How many minor deviations?
Minor deviations.
I would say less than a handful.
Okay, so we're not talking about major changes here, but just giving you flexibility?
Yeah, that's correct.
But it won't, just to reiterate something we talked about at the study session, it won't be flexibility only at the staff level, all of those issues will still be brought to the planning commission.
Definitely would be presented in our staff report.
Thank you.
We'd have a full analysis in our staff report.
Other questions? Okay, since it's a public hearing item, let's open the public. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Hearing none, let's go to the public hearing. Any other comments or anything? Okay...
I'd just like the definition of a handful.
Less than five. Five or less.
Five or less, put in the record.
Unless, of course, you're like my dad, who had two fingers cut off, so...
Wonderful. Okay, anybody like to make a motion here?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of CA-2-13, to amend Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code, to revise criteria associated with minor deviations, and to add a major deviation process.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, I have first and second. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next motion, or next item is CA 313. Jim, welcome back.
Jim Rundell, Senior Planner, here to provide a, provide a presentation on the code amendment associated with CA 3-13. Recently, the Sparks Building Code, or the International Building Code, was adopted into the city of Sparks Municipal Code. Essentially, that is the 2012 IBC. In the 2012 IBC International Building Code, a change was approved that changed when a building permit is required for accessory structures from 120 square feet to 200 square feet. The Sparks Zoning Code, Title 20, still says a building permit is required for structures over 120 square feet. So, we have a discrepancy between the two titles of the municipal code because of the adoption of the new IBC. Staff is proposing that we make those two standards consistent in the municipal code, and therefore, we're recommending we change when a building permit is required in the zoning code from 120 square feet to 200 square feet for an accessory structure. That concludes my presentation.
Wonderful. Any questions at this time? Okay, again, this is a public hearing item, so let's open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this item? Okay, let me close the public hearing. Any other discussions? Somebody like to make a motion?
I moved forward a recommendation of approval to city council of the code amendment requested associated with CA-3-13.
Okay. Second. Okay, you have first and second. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Again, item's passed. Thank you, Jim. All right, our next item is under general business, PCN 13018. Would you like to come speak for the city? No? You wouldn't like, you wouldn't like to speak on this item, Tim?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. For the record, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is a request for a tentative map for the Pinnacles Phase III subdivision, which is a 42-lot, single-family residential subdivision on about 12 and a half acres. This is actually the review of a previously approved tentative map. The tentative map for this particular project was approved back in 2004. Final maps were recorded for both Phase 1 and Phase 2. At the time, state law required that a successive final map be recorded within one year after the previous map was recorded, and in this particular case, that did not happen for the Phase III portion, and therefore, the tentative map for that portion expired. So, we're here today to essentially reactivate, if you will, that previous tentative map. So, what you'll see is, the conditions of approval for this were essentially conditions that were on that previous approval. The idea on these types of reviews are not to reinvent the wheel, and so, we try to use the same conditions, still subject to the same rules and regulations as they were previously, and in conformance with the Cully Ranch Southern Division Handbook. Staff did make a change to the one condition regarding the architectural elevations. The Cully Ranch Handbook doesn't actually require that the elevations come to the planning commission, and so, what we did in this case was allow the staff and the applicant the opportunity to work together on architectural elevations that are consistent with what's existing, to provide that continuity throughout the subdivision, and if there's disagreement or we're at an impasse, then we have the ability to bring that forward to the planning commission for your review. With that, staff is recommending that you forward a recommendation of approval onto the city council, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? Okay, let's, applicant, would you like to speak on this item? Come on down.
Gary Gazellis with Axion Engineering.
Ken Hendricks from KDH Builders.
Have a seat, show them. So, it's recorded.
Want me to start over? Good evening, Gary Gazellis with Axion Engineering. I'm here with Ken Hendricks from KDH Builders, and we really have no comments. Tim did a good job for us, and we're ready to get this thing built.
Okay. Okay, any questions, comments at this time?
Piece of cake.
Ah, it's not an issue.
Is the thought process that this will be homes built on speculation, or will there be, or will there be built to order?
I'd have to defer that to Ken.
Here you go, can I come down?
For the record, Ken Hendricks, KDH Builders. We're actually building in Unit 2 right now. We opened sales last weekend, and we actually sold five houses on the first weekend, so we are building some speculation, but most of it from this point forward will all be pre-sold.
Thank you. Any other questions, if you have any? Any more questions?
At the, at the study session the other day, I know that... There was some questions about the location of where it's at, so this is the...
Oh, okay.
The aerial that I promised. So, in the, in the lower right-hand corner is the disk drive Sparks Boulevard intersection. And as Ken mentioned, they're currently building in, in Phase 2, which is directly adjacent.
Is the Phase 2, or the phase that we're potentially approving tonight, what you see from Los Altos, where you see the grading and, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, when you're coming from the shopping-centered area, you can see actually, the hill kind of rises gradually, and you can actually see our houses being built on the second level. There's another developer that owns the lots just below us, but we're, we're up probably 20, 30 feet above where they're building.
And, but that's Phase 2 that we're seeing at this point?
Yes, that is Phase 2. We just finished the streets on there the other day, pulled power in, and we have, I think, six houses under construction right at the moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
On the conditions of approval, Tim, is there anything about dust control? Did I, unless I missed it?
There are no specific conditions in there that relate to dust control. However, there is a condition that references the Washoe County District Health Department, and they are ultimately the ones responsible for the dust control and air quality.
Okay. Wouldn't, would you, was the mass grading already done, this project? Is that correct? That's what I understand.
There is some excess dirt on the project that will need to be moved over time, but most of the mass ex is all done.
Right, so as far as the dust permit, you probably pulled that when you did your...
Exactly right, and then we renewed it once we started again.
Okay, but you will be getting, like you say, the files out of there.
Absolutely.
We're always happy when that goes.
So, is the main access going to be from Los Altos, two accesses?
Los Altos and Sparks Boulevard via the Mesa Meadows. That's correct, yeah. Los Altos off of Permidio, and then the Mesa Meadows off of Sparks Boulevard.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ken. Any other questions? Doesn't look like it. Somebody would like to make a motion here?
I move, I move to approve the tentative map associated with PCN 13018, adopting findings T1 through T12, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 19, as listed in the staff report.
Okay, second. First and second, any more comments? Okay, call for the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item is approved. Good luck with your project.
Race is on to winner, huh? Well, we need a winner after the last hour and six minutes.
I do, I love seeing those five, five units sold. That's fantastic. Okay, next item is public comments, would anybody in the public like to speak?
Absolutely.
Okay, not hearing any? Okay, comments from commissioners? Anybody having comments? Okay, that's, okay, let's call for adjournment. All right, all in favor? Aye. Yeah, I never know whether we have to do that.